I am very sorry there.
Fred Olson.
Present.
Naomi Buck. Lisa Ellison.
Here.
Thompson Forbes.
Present.
Sharon Gray.
Here.
Rita Jackson Gilbert.
Here.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
Minnie Johnson Anderson. Charles McGloughlin.
Here.
Michael White.
Here.
We have a call.
Well, thank you for that and thank you for reminding me of the roll call. This, this time, I guess we'll.
Please stand.
Pray.
Stand.
Gracious Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here tonight in a moment of collaboration and togetherness to serve our community and our county. Give us the wisdom to make good decisions and the energy to carry forth the business of this meeting and in the sake of enhancing our communities. Your name we pray, amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on our agenda is approval of the last meeting's minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the last meeting be approved.
I second them.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor or have any changes that they might like to make? Additions or corrections? If there's no additions and corrections, we have a vote of yea for approval of the minutes. Please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, who was the circuit?
It was. Alrighty, the motion carries. I'd like to open up the meeting for any public addresses to the board. And I don't believe we have anything scheduled, anyone scheduled to do that. And I don't see anyone either, so I'd like to go ahead and close the public address to the board. The next item on our agenda is a planning matter where we're going to review some of our consistency statements.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So there were some, some questions last month evidently about the consistency statement, how to apply it, what the boards, I guess, I want to kind of clarify a little bit about what the board's role is and what the consistency statements are. And also give you all some options to look at and to consider in terms of if you want to change how we present the consistency and how you formulate your, your recommendations that goes on to the Board of County Commissioners. So just real quickly to talk about the, the general statutes, which is where it states what the board is required to do. So as you know, from 160D dash six oh four, this involves planning board review, says that all proposed zoning text or map amendments shall be submitted to the planning board for review and comment. And when conducting that review, this board should advise and comment on whether that proposed action is consistent with any comprehensive land use plan that has been adopted and any other officially adopted plan that is also applicable. The board shall provide a written recommendation to the governing board that addresses plan consistency and any other matters as deemed appropriate. And a recommendation that a request is inconsistent with the plan shall not preclude consideration or approval of the request by the Board of County Commissioners. So because this is an advisory board, there's not as much scrutiny on what this board considers for consistency with the land use plan. So really, your only task is to state whether it is or is not consistent with the plan. I know there was some confusion with the motions last month in terms of whether there was a separate motion required or not. That is not stated in the statutes. So in terms of the planning board, you can do your recommendation and your plan consistency together. When we get to the Board of County Commissioners, which is under the following statute, it's 160D dash six oh five, they are required to approve what's called a brief statement describing whether its action is consistent or inconsistent with the plan. So they do have to actually approve a separate statement. They can also, if they, if their minutes show that they actually considered your recommendation, if that was clear in the minutes, that also can meet that requirement. And also if they determine that, that a rezoning is inconsistent with the plan but still approve it, it has the effect of actually amending the land use plan also automatically. So, so it's a little bit different from this board. They also are required to approve a statement that analyzes the reasonableness of the request. So you'll see when typical, when we do our recommendation, we state whether it's consistent, whether it's reasonable and in the public interest, that sort of thing. That's where that comes from. So again, this board isn't required to look at the reasonableness of the request, but you can. Because again, when you go back to the planning board statute, it says other matters as deemed appropriate. So you can look at those, you can comment on them, but you're just not required to. And so some of the things that the Board of Commissioners can look at when they're looking at reasonableness, they can look at the size, the physical condition of the property, the attributes of the proposed rezoning, whether it's beneficial or detrimental to the neighbors in the surrounding community. They can look at the relationship between what's currently permitted to adjoining properties and the relationship of what would be permitted under the new rezoning. They can look at whether the action taken is in the public interest and if there's any conditions that have changed since the land use plan came in that warrant the amendment. So for instance, if, if your plan's a little bit older, you started getting a lot more commercial development in an area and it's maybe turning over to a more commercial area, but the plan doesn't call for that, they can look at that and use that as one of their justifications for approving a rezoning. Does that make sense? So one of the things we want to kind of talk with you tonight, just give you a few options, because we, we want some guidance from the board just as in terms of how you want us to present these consistency statements to you. This on your screen, this is a consistency statement that we had prepared for the rezoning request last month. Basically, it's in line with what our recommendation is. It comes, it's essentially right in your staff report in terms of the recommendation where we find where it's consistent with the land use plan, then we go on to talk about being reasonable in the public interest. And then it gets into the board's recommendation. So when we forward this on to the Commissioners, the Chair would sign this statement, we would include it with the packet and send it to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. But again, we'd like some, some input and some guidance from this board in terms of how to better this process so that everybody understands and is clear on what is being presented, not only to this board but to the County Commissioners when you make your recommendation. So we do have a couple of options to go through real quick. You can take any of these options if you like, you can use some in combination. It's up to y'all really to how to present it. Again, the only, the biggest thing is this, we want to make sure that when you're making your recommendation, that we are addressing that consistency and it's included in that motion. So, and we can do it all in one motion. That was another question last month. There is, like I said, there is no separate requirement for a separate statement, you can do it all together. It's just how you word that motion. So the first option for your consideration is just a real, simple, down and dirty statement. Basically just provides the facts of the case or the information, states whether the request is or is not consistent and whether the board recommends approval or denial. It doesn't give a whole lot of other information, so if there's further discussion from the board about the request or there's additional matters that you want to include, this wouldn't really do that. I mean, we can, we could amend it, but that would probably get more into our second option where this option, we could prepare a draft statement to, to give to the board. We would probably include that in your staff report and that would, again, give our recommended statement. But then if the board wants to go a different direction following public comments or you have some other concerns about it, we could then take that statement and revise it so to base it off of what the, the board discusses. Now, the two pros and cons to that is if we do a draft statement, if the board goes along with it, we can have that statement there that night, the Chair can sign it right then following the meeting and we can send it on. Whereas with a revised statement, we'll have to revise it, meet up with the Chair later and then, and then get it signed. So, and then a third option we've got is really just that the board can craft your own statement. And we can provide a worksheet where it would have basically a, a template of sorts and would give you a recommended motion language. And then as this, as this shows, it's got examples that you could use for your reasons for either approval or denial. And then we could take that, craft it into a statement and get the Chair to sign it. So, or we, like I said, we could do a combination of them. We could do where the staff drafts a statement and then we still provide a worksheet also in the event that the board wants to go a different way. So I would like to hear any questions, if anybody's got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them or if there's any discussion or if you want to go ahead and decide how we want to proceed.
I just have, Mr. Chairman, I just have a simple, a very simple question. That if, if the board finds that it's not consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, hypothetically, we could still recommend approval, but would that ipso facto amend the map? If that were approved, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, the, the board, again, since this is an advisory board, you can make any recommendation that you want. You could find it's inconsistent with the plan and recommend approval. That is absolutely, that is absolutely a task, something you could, a step you could take.
But it would only be a recommendation. The map be amended, which the County Commissioners would finally decide.
Right, and then when the Commissioners, if they follow that same action and they find it's inconsistent and approve it, then it automatically amends that map in the plan. Yes.
I don't understand it's, if it's not consistent, why are we approving it?
Well, again, it could be that, that something's changed. It could be that certain conditions have changed in the area wherever the request is. Like I said, it, it may be that the plan is older. You know, we had, we, we fortunately have a fairly new plan that we're dealing with. So we've only just gone through the process of updating that in the last couple of years. But it could be, you know, six, seven years down the line, we're seeing development trending a different way in certain areas. And that may be reason to approve something, but it may be inconsistent with the plan. And so it may also, you know, it would change the plan, but it may also be sort of an impetus for this board to look at the plan again and maybe make some further changes to it. Yes, ma'am.
Does the, do the Commissioners appreciate having our insight into like the reasonableness?
I think so. You know, it, it at least gives them more input and more, sort of more things to consider. So if you're just, if you're just talking about whether it is or is not consistent, that doesn't give a lot of insight into what the concerns of the board may have been or what the public concerns may have been. So yes, I think it's, I think it's beneficial to, to comment on that, yes.
So that would be a strike against like option one?
I, I would think so. And if you were to ask my recommendation, I think we would probably lean towards a combination of option two and three. Where we can, in our staff report, prepare, prepare that draft and then have a worksheet to follow if you wanted to go in a different direction. Yes, ma'am.
Well, when we met last month, we approved that, which was before us. However, I had questions about if we approved it and then they were, they didn't stick to the plan, right? So we said it was approved, but how do we follow up to make sure that they stay consistent?
Right. Well, the one, the one we had last month was a conditional district rezoning. So that does involve a, a site plan that has to be approved as well. So we take what's been approved at the board and with the Board of County Commissioners and then it's got a list of conditions, which we have in, in your staff report. And then we apply those to that, that site plan review. And so we're making sure that they're meeting all those conditions. And if they're not, then we don't have to issue a permit or it becomes a violation if it happens later on after we've approved everything.
Right, that was my question, like later on, how is follow-up done late on to make sure they stay in compliance?
We do, yeah, we do, was it every, every other year? Every other year for conditional district rezonings, we do, we do site inspections of all the ones that have been approved. To make sure that they are still in compliance with their requirements.
Okay.
So if we approve it without conditions, there's no follow-up from the, from your department?
Typically, we're going to have some conditions, whether it's the site plan or whether it's, they have to go through inspections. But typically, we're still at least checking to make sure they're following their site plan.
Any further discussions? Are we required to put this in forth of the motion?
I would prefer a motion so that way we have it clear as to what you want to do. Yes, sir.
I'd like to entertain a motion if anybody has some kind.
I make a motion that we adopt suggestions two and three, combine them together where we have the recommendation of the staff and the checklist combined.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Now have a vote of yea by raising your right hand. Nay with your left hand. Motion passed.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate that. That, that gives us good marching orders for going forward. Just, just a note for tonight, basically what we'll do is we'll capture what the discussion is or what the motion is. If you want to refer to these, this worksheet and the draft motion, to come up with your motions for the rezonings tonight, that'll help us and we'll draft those and going forward, we'll make sure we have everything in your packets in terms of having a draft statement and those worksheets together.
I think this is going to be very helpful.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I hope so too.
Next on the agenda, we have a rezoning request. Mr. Gooby, you're up again.
Yes, sir.
For Wesley Taylor rezoning.
Yes, sir. We have a request, it's by Wesley Taylor, it's to rezone approximately three and a quarter acres of property. It's par, it's two parcels total, it's eight zero seven one one four and eight two seven six zero. This is located on NC forty-three South. It's just south of its intersection with Joe Stock's Road and the request is to go from rural agricultural to general commercial. So you see this, the site area, this is on forty-three South, as if you're heading down towards Chikod from Greenville. This is a picture of one of the sites. There's a vacant lot that's currently part of the request as well as an existing building on, on that property. This was a building that's been there for some time. If you've been down forty-three, you're probably familiar with it. It was originally permitted as a farm building, but it's being used for storage now. And this property is also owned by Wesley Taylor. And if this is a view looking towards the south on forty-three, if you're heading towards Chikod and then north, if you're going back towards Greenville. This is the picture I thought was coming up, but this site is also owned by Wesley Taylor, this is CNC Stoneworks. Some of you have been on the board for a while, may even remember, he had a rezoning a few years ago for this site. At that time, our land use plan actually did not call for commercial in that area because we were still under our old plan. This board had actually recommended denial on it, the Board of County Commissioners approved it. It was done as a conditional district rezoning. So I, so again, we'll kind of talk about that in a little bit. This is also a fence company that's down there, this is directly adjacent to the site that's proposed for rezoning. And then across the street is Creatures Landscaping, that's a landscape company. And then there's also a vacant lot. So as I said, there's a, there are a couple of commercial uses out there. CNC Stoneworks is across the street, you can see it's directly across from it, there's two adjacent commercial properties. There's also some commercial to the south and to the north at the corner of Joe Stock's. And again, our land use plan because, mainly because of the CNC Stoneworks and the fence company and the landscaping company that have come after that, we did amend, or when we did the NC forty-three South land use plan, we designated this area as rural commercial because we felt like it was transitioning again to a more commercial part of that corridor and it wasn't necessarily going to be residential anymore. Again, the land use classification, it is rural commercial. Calls for small-scale, low-impact, non-residential uses that serve area residents with general retail and services. Sites are smaller than the suburban commercial uses further north in the NC forty-three South study area. Development should utilize cross-access to neighboring parcels to help reduce its impact on traffic as the neighboring parcels develop. So the zoning of the property is rural agricultural, you can see across the street with CNC Stoneworks, that was general industrial. And again, that was a conditional district, so that did have certain standards. And again, we do, we have inspected that site and make sure they're still in compliance. The proposed zoning is general commercial and this is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. Again, staff, we do find that the request is consistent with the NC forty-three South quarter land use plan. It is designated as rural commercial, which allows small-scale, low-impact, non-residential land uses. The area proposed for rezoning does have frontage and, and direct access to the highway and it's located within close proximity to several other non-residential land uses that are within the vicinity. We also find that the request is reasonable because again, there are other commercial land uses in the vicinity along NC forty-three South. And additionally, any, if they do bring any commercial use, they will be subject to a site plan review, they'll have screening standards that they'll have to meet and certain buffering requirements. And some, some commercial uses may also have additional setbacks from property. So they will, we will be reviewing all that in terms of the, the site plan review. So staff does recommend approval of the request. We'd like now to entertain public comments and also after that, the planning board then make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners and the Commissioners are scheduled to hold their public hearing on December sixteenth. So with that, Mr. Chairman, would you like to turn over public comments?
I'd like to open it up to public comments, but I don't think anybody is registered to speak for or against.
No, sir, and the applicant is not here tonight either, so.
So I think we'll show close to public comments. Any discussion from the board, questions?
I have a question.
Thompson.
So this is marked general commercial, but in other areas I see rural commercial. I think the, the statement actually, what's the difference? And what are we, what are we voting on?
Sure, so the rural commercial is the future land use category. So that's what's designated in the NC forty-three South land use plan. The general commercial is the actual zoning requirement or the zoning district. So that is what's being requested is general commercial.
Can you explain the difference in those two commercial types?
Well, again, the rural commercial is just a land use type category. So it's the, it, it, it's what provides the recommendation in the plan in terms of the types of non-residential land uses that would be there. So again, it calls for small-scale, non-residential land uses and the general commercial is just more encompassing zoning of that commercial district. So it, it would allow more like, it allows everything from retail to contractors, that sort of thing.
So is rural, commercial, I think my confusion is because on proposed zoning on the application, both are listed as zoning categories.
Right, but his proposed zoning on the application is general commercial. So we do have a rural, commercial zoning district, but that's not what he's requesting. The rural, it's when we get kind of the difference between the land use categories and the zoning districts. They are, sometimes they have similar names, but they are different, they serve different purposes. So the rural, commercial, land use category is not zoning, that's more of a policy in terms of the types of commercial you'd want to see in that area. The general commercial is the actual zoning, which dictates the specific uses, the specific standards like the setbacks, parking, signage, that sort of thing.
Yes, that is confusing.
It is, I agree.
But let me, let me just say to, Mr. Chairman, so, but I want everybody to understand that general commercial, I assume, means you can have a shoe store or a butcher shop or just about anything that wasn't offensive per se, in and of itself.
I agree. I think the difference, there's a lot of differences is the type of businesses that can be there become the general commercial. We'll cover all of that, but if you get into specifics, then you have to divvy it up into the policy side of things.
Yeah, but you don't have to get separate planning approval for a shoe store or a butcher shop.
That's correct.
So, but what has happened has been the Highway forty-three neighborhood has, and this is an example, there are three other examples already have already, the rural nature of it have been changed. I mean, that's just my opinion, so.
So if we allow the, the land use to, to be, become like industrial as far as zone, as far as zoning for this particular purpose, then how close or what, what's the proximity would you actually allow then to, to become rural, residential or agricultural? Would there be a, would there be a, a space? I mean, I, I guess, to your concern, how much would the landscape change to continue to become, to transfer this property to light industrial?
Well, it won't be light industrial, it will be commercial.
Okay, so commercial.
And, and again, not to get too specific in terms of the types of uses he's proposing, because we can't consider that at this board. What he's proposing was probably going to be pretty unoffensive and generate probably very little traffic. Now again, that could change, once it's zoned commercial, he could turn around and sell it to somebody else who wants to do something different commercial. But again, I think in terms of what the land use plan calls for, land use plan designates that as a commercial area, we feel like this is going to be very appropriate for that. And so the, the, the remaining zoning around it, the RA and the RR that's there will stay and people can still develop on that, but we don't see, we don't really see that developing for residential. It may still be used for agricultural.
Oh, okay.
But it, it's not, we don't anticipate any kind of large residential development or any further residential development.
That was my, that was my thought, because if there was a, you know, maybe a track builder or somebody like that that was looking at that, you know, forty-three quarter as being a prime place to, you know, move into, would that be something that, that would be considered? Or would that stop, you know, this light industrial commercial from happening?
It would still be considered under the current zoning. I think there's going to be other limitations in that area that would probably prevent some further development like that. The soil classifications down in that area aren't great in terms of septic tanks. And that's the same for this property. I'm not a soil scientist, I'm not with environmental health.
It won't hurt.
But they're probably, they're probably not going to do anything that's going to generate a lot of wastewater or anything that's going to cause a lot of issues with the soil, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll ask another question that's probably a lot like the last one that I asked. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
So the recommended land use plan, land use is rural, commercial.
Correct.
But the applicant is going for general, commercial.
Correct.
Which allows for a larger scale kind of activity.
It could, yes.
And the reason why staff recommends this is because it sort of looks like it's going that direction anyway?
Yes, that, that corridor we see is being more, much more, or at least that portion of the corridor because of CNC Stoneworks, because of the landscaping company and the fence company that's there and just the general pattern that we're starting to see, we, we just don't anticipate it being residential. It's going to be, it's, it's more suited for a commercial, so almost like a commercial node. It's not really a full corridor, you're not going to get the same, necessarily the same kind of development you would up towards the northern end of forty-three with, with Greenville and Bell's Fork area. But it's going to be probably more commercial building contractors, storage warehouses, that sort of thing that we're going to see. And again, I think the, just the limitations of the land itself is going to limit what can go on there anyways, in this was.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't notice anything in your driveway cut. But maybe I overlooked it. Do they plan for a driveway cut?
That we don't know, we'll review that when we get a site plan in. He does have a driveway to the existing building that's there. And again, the plan does recommend doing cross-access easements. So it may be a situation where we recommend that he just uses that single access and, and maybe improves that so that they don't have driveways going all up and down forty-three.
But, but isn't it true that in the future, with the rate we're going, what we're going to see is a bunch of driveway cuts, just like we have? to see is a bunch of driveway cuts, just like we have on Greenville Boulevard in Greenville?
Well, it's, it's possible. But again, we do, we do send, we don't control the driveways. We don't control any of those accesses. We send those to DOT. But it's, it's possible you'll have, yes.
But we dictate it when we, when we designate general, commercial. We, we, we set the, we set the stage for another driveway.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not saying I'm against it, but that's, I just want to point that out to everybody, that I don't think people realize that you can have, you know, Highway forty-three could all of a sudden have two hundred driveway cuts, and, and it'll be another Greenville Boulevard.
I have a question about the consistency statement.
Yes, sir.
We have an overlay of the Highway forty-three corridor, and then we have the envisioned land use. If our, how does our consistency statement should, should reflect which one or both?
So it'll be NC forty-three South, the corridor plan. Because if, if you recall, and I wish I had a map to pull up and show you, when we developed the envisioned twenty-four-five plan, the, the NC forty-three South corridor and the Southwest bypass corridor plan, those were two pretty brand-new plans that we still had. We just, they were only a couple of years old, and we didn't want to do away with those. So we cut out the areas for those study areas on that map. So the envisioned plan for those areas refers back to these corridor plans. So this would be the primary plan that we, we go with those recommendations on. And that's the, what you would address the consistency for.
All right, thank you.
So again, the, the, the way the statute is, it's the adopted comprehensive land use plan or any other plan that's, any other adopted plan that's applicable. And so this would be the applicable plan in this case.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further comments or discussions?
I'll express a concern, I suppose, that, I don't know, I, I just wonder if we would be contributing to an issue of, like, or putting the final decision on, no, this is not actually going to be what it has been proposed to be because of these conditional zonings that are around it.
Mm-hmm.
And so this would be the final step in saying, okay, nope, this is not going to be the rural setting, this is going to be commercial.
Well, again, like I said, this was, this was the land use plan that we, that this board, which I realize you probably weren't on the board at that time, but this board and the Board of County Commissioners, they all adopted it. And so that is the plan that we, we go by. And so it does designate that section as being appropriate for commercial-type development. Yes.
But not general, commercial.
It's semantics. So, but it does, it does call for, like I said, non-residential land uses, small scale. And again, this is three and a quarter acres, of which about two-thirds is already taken up with a building, so we're really looking at maybe an acre that is actually developable for this property. So again, like, we feel it's, we feel like that's appropriate, yes.
But the building can come down.
It could.
I mean, that, that shouldn't be limiting the amount of developable property.
It could. But again, like I said, I think there's other, there's going to be other conditions in terms of the soils that are going to limit what can be done out there. So, but that's, again, that's more speculation on my part, but I've been doing this for twenty years, and I've kind of got a good feel for the soils in that area. So, so I think it's not going to be quite as, you're not going to have a Walmart try to go in on that little piece of property, probably not even a gas station or anything like that. It's going to be something small. So, but again, i- if, if, if the pleasure of the board is to recommend that it should come back as a conditional district rezoning, then we can recommend that as well. That can be done.
I hear no other questions? Do I have a motion in either direction?
I think a motion that we take, uh, the board's recommendation and approve the rezoning request.
We have a motion to approve without condition?
Well, won't be in conditions, but we do need to address the consistency as part of that.
Yes, sir. So do you want to rephrase that with the consistency statement?
Basically, I ride by that area every day, twice a day, taking my granddaughter school and coming back. And that fence company and the stoneworks, it's been there a long time, and like you, I can't see any, anything going up out there outside of that. I just stand by my recommendation.
So do we want to incorporate a consistency statement saying that it is consistent or inconsistent?
Oh, yes, excuse me, yes, definitely. I make a recommendation, we take staff's recommendation to approve the rezoning request that consists with, uh, the planning board's, the staff's planning. And we recommend what, consistent one and two, uh, two and three?
Uh, two and three. Sir.
Two and three.
We're saying, repeat the motion for the benefit, that, the motion is that we approve and follow the staff recommendations of approval, that it is consistent with the rec, the recommended land use through the forty-three corridor.
You did a whole lot of the job, man.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion?
Yes. One more question, just in the sake of, because we have two similar proposals for a rezoning request, we don't ask that they give a reason. Is that correct?
That's correct. For a general, general rezoning like this, we don't ask them what the use is going to be.
Okay, so in our decision-making process, maybe my question is ahead of where it should be, but we don't take into consideration what the reason for the rezoning is, as our second case is going to state the reason for the rezoning.
Right. Well, i- in this instance, you should technically consider the whole range of uses that could go under general commercial.
And I think the next one is a conditional also, whereas this is not a conditional.
You're referring to the next item on the agenda, not the next part of this?
That, that is correct. So we have a second, any other further discussion or questions? I'd like to ask for a vote, yea, with your, raising of your right hand to pass. All is opposed, left? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's interesting, you know, it, it makes it hard for us to make a decision like that if we don't know what actual type of business is being planned there. So it makes it a little bit harder for us.
But it could be anything, so.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
I know it's a little late now, but, and we've already voted on it, but could you ask for a condition on that rezoning?
Well, not under general, we can't add any conditions to it. And the conditional zoning process is voluntary. We don't, we can't require somebody to go through it. We do have a couple uses that we do require, solar farms, sand mines, those sort of things. But under, under this instance, where since that's not one of those specific uses, we don't require. We can suggest it, and we typically do suggest it, and it's just up to the applicant if they want to go through with that or not.
All right. I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, another rezoning request. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Board members. Our next request this evening is another rezoning request. This was submitted by Joanna Portillo to rezone one point eight-two acres of her property. This is parcel number eight-two-two-four-five, and it is located at the northeastern corner of County Home Road and McLaughlin Farm Road. The request is to go from rural residential to general, commercial, conditional district for the storage of equipment and a material for an existing landscape company, and that company is Alex Ponestra and Mulch, LLC. Just to give some background, history of the property, back in two thousand fourteen, the owner, same owner, applied and had a portion of that property, about one point eight-one acres, rezoned to general, commercial, conditional use for that landscaping business. And then in two thousand eighteen, an additional point three-zero-five acres were rezoned to expand the business. And this request this evening is to further expand this business to allow additional area for storage of equipment and materials. And Miss Gray, to your point earlier, when we do our inspections every two years, this was a site that we realized was out of compliance because they had expanded without approval and going through this process that we're doing tonight. At that time, we sent a violation letter, and they've worked with the surveyor to get a new site plan and submit this application tonight. So just to kind of explain what our process is, once it leaves this board and the Commissioners approve it, we do do inspections every two years, and this is an example of a property we found to be out of compliance, and we basically said either everything needs to be moved into these two areas that were rezoned previously, or if you want to expand again, we need another application. We did request that they kind of try to look into the future a little bit, so we weren't here, again, another year to do another half acre. So that's what we're seeing here this evening, why this kind of came before, just to give you a little bit more background.
Thank you.
So you see the property is located just south of Greenville County Home Road, east of NC forty-three South, and west of, or east of the town of Winterville. It is around Worthington Crossroads. Some site pictures of the property, this is looking at the existing business, and this property is, well, I'll show you in a minute, but it is a larger manufactured home park. And like I said, in two thousand fourteen, they started to rezone a portion of it for this landscape business, but there is a manufactured home park on the property, and we'll see that in the maps in a couple of minutes. So this is looking south down County Home Road, and this is looking north back up towards Greenville. This is the property that is, you can kind of see it from McLaughlin Farm Road. This is looking east on McLaughlin Farm Road, and then west back toward County Home Road. This is an adjacent residence that also happens to have a home occupation across the site from County Home Road. There's an adjacent undeveloped agricultural field across County Home Road. And then across McLaughlin Farm Road, there's a separate manufactured home park that's been there for a while, as well as an existing mini-storage facility that has been there since pre-zoning. Little south of the property, at Worthington Crossroads, there is an existing convenience store, as well as a little commercial building with a couple of different commercial uses. So the existing land uses in the area, you see the two squares there, that is what is proposed for rezoning this evening. It's currently residential, and actually, they've moved a couple manufactured homes from that site is where they started expanding the business. You see the red square there on the same property that has been rezoned previously, the mini-store just showed the picture of, as well as the two commercial uses just to the south on County Hunting Road and Worthington Road. The envisioned Pitt County twenty-four-five land use plan does have a couple of disparate designations. So the corner, piece right on the corner, that's designated as commercial crossroads, and then this square right here, just interior to the site, that is suburban residential on the future land use map, and I will break both of those down now. So the commercial crossroad, these are located at or around established crossroad communities. These areas have a high history of commercial development that serve a larger surrounding area. Appropriate uses include a mix of residential, public and institutional, and commercial uses, and non-resident, non-residential uses can be located near residential uses with appropriate buffers. These are located, again, at the existing community crossroads throughout the, the county, so Bell Arthur, Bell Bore, Blackjack, Eastern Ponds, Pactolus, Stokes, Worthington, the area we're looking at this evening, US two sixty-four and Old Pactolus Road. Again, the mixes are typically a mix of single-family detached homes, public and institutional, as well as commercial uses, utility access, some water access, and mostly onsite and septic systems. That other prop, or piece of the property that's kind of more interior that was designated as suburban residential, this designation does contain primarily single-family detached homes and neighborhoods with interconnected streets. Non-residential uses within this character area should be located with frontage and access to a major highway or secondary road, at major intersection or proximity to similar uses with spatial separation or buffers between incompatible uses. Non-residential development should be designed in a context-sensitive matter and may be considered on a case-by-case basis in a conditional zoning district. Typically located near existing residential and commercial development, and in areas experiencing significant growth within the county. The uses, again, are single-family detached homes, manufactured homes, duplexes, some agriculture, agri-business, limited multifamily commercial, or, excuse me, limited multifamily commercial, office, limited industrial and public and institutional, institutional uses. Utility access is onsite septic with community water service, and public sewer may be available in these areas with voluntary annexation. And typically, the density varies from one to three units per acre. So the Pitt County zoning map, you see the area here was the two portions of the property that was already been rezoned to commercial. Otherwise, it's all rural residential in the area, except for those two commercial properties just south at Worthington Crossroads. The proposed zoning, again, is general, commercial, and this is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. And again, this item is a conditional zoning district, which does call for approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions. And again, the proposed use is the storage of equipment and material for an existing landscape company, the expansion of Alex Ponestra and Mulch. The site plan our office received, the dash line there is the property line, kind of the western portion of the property, to the east is the rest of the manufactured home park, the area that is currently zoned general, commercial, conditional district, and then the two areas that are proposed for rezoning. The existing private road and driveway going into the property is shown there. There are some existing structures on the property. There are three existing grave sites. These won't affect the proposed use. They were shown on the site plan, and our department doesn't really have any say over that, but we did want to highlight that since it was shown on their site plan. It is a private family burial site of the current property owners. There is existing screening to the north, and they are showing some proposed screening around the additional two areas to screen from both the road and the additional manufactured home park. So planning staff does find that this request is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County twenty-four-five comprehensive land use plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as commercial crossroads and suburban residential on the future land use map. Additionally, a portion of the property is currently zoned general, commercial, conditional district, and the property is within close proximity to several existing general, commercial zone properties. Planning staff also finds that this request is reasonable because the requested area is an extension to an existing commercial land use for the purposes of additional storage of equipment and material, and will have no additional impacts on the surrounding properties. Additionally, the proposed use will be screened and buffered from adjacent residential properties. And planning staff does recommend approval of the request with the following additional conditions. And again, since this is a conditional district proposal, we, the board can put reasonable conditions on it, and these are the ones proposed by staff. No zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan prepared in accordance with Appendix B of the zoning ordinance is submitted to Pitt County Planning for review and approval. A landscaping plan is required, and the property shall be screened from any adjacent residential use and public road right-ofways by a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer yard planted in accordance with the requirements of Section ten H of the zoning ordinance. A soil erosion and sedimentation control plan prepared by an engineer shall be submitted for development of this property that results in land disturbance over one acre. They must comply with the Pitt County Storm Order Ordinance for nutrient control and submit stormwater calculations with the plan, comply with emergency management requirements for fire protection. They must obtain all required permits from Pitt County Inspections to occupy any proposed structures and comply with any applicable environmental health requirements for wastewater disposal. And finally, they must comply with all requirements from NC DOT for access to the subject property. Planning board will now entertain public comments and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, who are scheduled to hold a public hearing on December sixteenth.
I'd like to open up any public comments, yea or nay, of this proposal. Once again, as before, I do not see anyone or have a list of anyone expected to address the board. So I'd like to close the public address. Now it is time for discussion, and let the conditions begin. Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning request from Joanna Portillo, and find it is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County.
and find it is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County twenty-four-five comprehensive land use plan, and is reasonable for the reasons stated by the people in charge.
Staff.
Staff.
I'll take it.
Thank you. With the conditions recommended by staff.
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
I think Mr. Hardy has beat you to it. So, we have a second to the motion. Is there any further discussion or questions on the motion made? All righty. I don't see any, so let's go call for a vote. May I have, raise your right hand for yea. All those opposed, raise your left. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you all.
Mr. Hill, I believe you're up on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. Just to wrap up, we do have a few informational items included in your packet. Tonight, we have communication in there regarding some of the ARPA replacement funds that we had. If you'll keep in mind, our department is also in charge of housing, and we received some ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act money, within our department to replace some homes. So, there's some communication in there. We are moving forward with the replacement of eleven homes using that money. So, we got authorization for the county manager to sign off on those contracts. So, we will, in the next year, start replacing those homes that were in poor condition. Also, there is some advertisements in there. We held an informational session just last week at the Ag Center regarding our flood print project that we're working on with INCOR, which is, well, actually, it's the Coastal Dynamics Lab from NC State that's working with us on this project to identify resilience, resiliency projects that we can implement here in Pitt County to assist during natural disasters. So, had that event last week and had good attendance at that event. Also, there are several articles in your agenda packet pertaining to zoning and, and planning-related matters that have been in the reflector in case you guys missed them, as well as your departmental monthly report that is included in that packet. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
I have a question, please, Joe.
Yes?
Is, was that complete, your buyout with the money you got? I know they've been working on it a long time.
Right. So, the buyout is something completely separate from what I was talking about, the replacement housing. So, we are currently working on acquiring our last property for the Hurricane Florence buyout. We have one more home that we are in the process of purchasing, and we'll then demolish that home and let that area revert back to its natural state in perpetuity. So, we hope, hope to have that finished by the end of the year, this year, and close out that project. Any other questions? Good question.
Comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I do have one last thing. I can confirm that we will not have a meeting next month.
Okay.
So, December meeting, we'll see you back in two thousand twenty-five.
Well, I hope everybody has a very wonderful holiday season coming up. We have two months to enjoy before we come back to work on, in January. Meeting adjourned.